Ellen. You're on mute.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
How you doing?
Good, good. Getting ready for a big storm.
I was just gonna say that. Hopefully it won't be that big, but I just looked, they say could be eight inches, and that's enough.
That'd be a lot. We're not, we're not ready for winter right now.
No.
We're in, we're in spring mode.
Exactly. Even my kids were saying, and they're a lot younger, they were saying, "It's time for spring, even if we haven't had a lot of snow."
So I, I have been starting to hear the birds coming back.
Yeah, me too.
So that, that's a good feeling.
And plus, the time's gonna change, right? In two weekends, I think.
Aren't we gonna stop doing that, or is this, didn't they vote not to move the clocks?
I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was this year that it's taking effect.
I don't know. I wish they would stop doing it.
So do I.
Takes too long to re-acclimate.
Right, right. And not only that, we have this gigantic clock that hangs on the wall, that it takes two people to change the time, and then to try to get it back on the wall, it takes forever.
All right. We're done now. All right, thank you. Okay, we only have one thing on the agenda, and that's to talk about the, the shoveling and plowing. So the reason I thought we should meet is, first of all, I wanted your input on the notice for Everything Columbia about launching the pilot program that I sent you a copy of.
It was great.
Is that okay for everybody? So we'll ask Bernadette if you could maybe stick that in your newsletter, and Mark, if you could put that in the town newsletter, so that will let people know that it's there and ready to go.
Okay. Where is this located?
I sent, I sent it out in a, in a attachment. I'll resend it to you if, and to Mark, too, just to make sure you have it. I just didn't, you know what, I may have just sent it to the Commission on Aging members because I wanted input before I asked you guys to print it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again, I didn't mean that. I would just need that as soon as possible.
I'll, I'll do it as soon as I get off. As soon as, as soon, I'll send it right to you. All right, so that, we don't need to change the wording on the contractors. That was what we had to, had to talk about, I think. Margie, you had some thoughts about it?
Uh, did I?
I think so. I think you said there was something that it was either missing, or you wanted to change, and I'm not sure what it was.
I can't even remember, Kathy. I'm really sorry. I didn't look at what, did I send you an email on it?
No, you just said we'll talk about it at the meeting. So let me just read it to you. So Bernadette and Mark, I'm not sure you have this. Either, we were gonna put this in Everything Columbia as well for getting contractors that would be interested in doing it. So what I had written was, "The Commission on Aging is looking for resident snow plowings slash shoveling businesses that would be interested in our pilot program for shoveling and plowing for seniors in Columbia. Both shoveling and plowing would be required. If you're interested in this pilot program, please contact Katie Wilt Town Social Worker for more information." Was there anything that should be changed before I put that out, and maybe the same thing for the newsletter and Bernadette? We just wanted to make sure we offered it to town businesses first.
Do you want to mention anywhere that it would also be appreciated for donations to have this program continue?
That's, that's in the Everything Columbia letter.
Okay.
So when I send that to you, it was, I'll just read it to you quickly. "The Columbia Commission on Aging is launching a pilot program to older seniors that have limited funds to get help with plowing and shoveling. Seniors without resources are in a difficult situation for emergency vehicles to get them isolation from access to transportation to the senior center for a meal, and at greater risk of falling to get their mail. We're looking for a funding, we're looking for funding partners from our local houses of worship, civic organizations, and individuals to make this program a success. We are grateful to the Columbia Alliance for being our first partner in this program. If you'd like to join us in our effort, please message me for more information, or send your contributions to the Town of Columbia Columbia Seniors Community Assistance Fund. This fund will be managed by the Town Social Worker and will roll over from your tier, so that funds are available for harsher winters. On behalf of the Commission members, we sincerely thank you for your consideration."
And Kathy, that fund right now has 300 in it from Kona's addition. I haven't received a thousand yet from the seniors, from the Lions.
Okay.
So that must be coming.
Yeah, I think they voted on it, and it was, it was coming.
So they just had to get the check to us.
Correct, correct. So we'll have 1,300 in it.
Okay, great.
So are there any changes that you would like to go back to for the contractors?
No, I thought. The only thing, Kath, is, do you wanna put Katie's phone number in there?
Yeah, I can do that. Katie, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think I just want a little guidance on how we're screening contractors. I know Bernadette has like a handful of people that she's, you know, just from experience vetted that we'd be comfortable using, but for people contacting me, I'm not sure how to, to vet them, I guess. Like, do we wanna have like an informal contract with places? Is it, you know, what if a plow place comes in and takes out personal lawn, or, you know, like, or is it just, does it matter what insurance a plow place has? I mean, maybe nobody will reach out to participate, but I guess I just wanna be sure I'm doing the responsible thing if I'm receiving calls of people interested. And also, sorry, my, I got a new computer, my camera isn't working, so sorry about that.
Okay. Katie, first, before we go there, can you give me your direct line again?
Sure, it's 860-228-1008.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Mark, what do you, what are your feelings about that?
Um, we should probably have on store at least their insurance, because usually any vendor we pay, we, we, it's, it's funny, because we never hire, we don't hire plow people ever, because we have our own. But anyone doing a job for us has to show that they have workman's comp. But in this case, they're probably self-insured.
Right.
So you wouldn't need comp. Bernadette, what happens when you hire someone at the senior center?
Do you? I think carry their own insurance, and I have a copy of it.
Okay. So we, we do the same thing. So we'll, we'll duplicate exactly what we do when we bring on a vendor that we expect to use over and over.
Does that help, Katie?
I think so. So if somebody's interested in participating, they have to be comfortable submitting that paperwork, and then they're probably gonna wanna know how much they're gonna get paid.
That was the other thing we wanted to talk about. Bernadette, how many people do you have on that list for plowing and shoveling?
Let me see.
Was this a list that people self-identified that they could use some assistance?
This is a list for Meal on Wheels clients. These are homebound seniors. Well, but dozen.
Could I ask, could I ask if Fernando Garcia is on that list?
Oh, you're talking about the plow people. You have a list of four people for plowing, and Fernando is, Garcia is definitely on it.
Okay, because I'm just, the reason I'm asking is that little bit of snow, he called, he was in New York, and he was worried about us. Did we need him to come in and shovel the walk and stuff for us? So, you know, there are some people that are just so conscientious and above and beyond.
Yeah.
And when I spoke, oh, hi, hi Maggie. When I spoke with him, then I said, "By the way, we're doing a new pilot program, and I don't know if it's something that you'd be interested in, but make sure, you know, your information gets to whomever." And he said, "Definitely interested," and one of the things that I suggested, and I think when Katie, when you talk to people, whoever you decide to, to do the plowing, is they don't have to be first on their list for plowing, they could be last on their list, and I think that that's a relief for some of the people that are doing shoveling and plowing. You know, that, that, that would be, I would think, something that they would be interested in. The amount of money that I was thinking is, if we contract with one or two, I'm gonna say, to make it consistent, people for plowing, if we gave them a certain amount, I'm saying, and I'm off the top of my head, was between $40 and $50 per event, that if they had a long driveway, and that maybe they would have charged more compared to somebody with a short driveway, that would have been less, that it would kind of even out over the course of the winter. You know, it would kind of be a halfway amount in between, but I don't know, any input that anybody has would be, be great.
Sounds like, it sounds like a compromise that would work.
You'll probably have to talk to the contractors and see what they'd be willing to do it for.
They might be less.
We could.
Katie, that might be something, I don't know, if you do a ballpark and see how they react to that?
Yeah, like maybe what their charging structure is, and then if they wanted to be potentially like locked into being a vendor with us, if they'd offer more of a discount, or like a flat rate. I'm also just now thinking, like, you know, from what you said, Kathy, it, it just kind of also makes me think, okay, are we having people plow the driveways and shovel walkways?
Yes, that's imperative. They have to be willing to do both. If they won't shovel, then it's a non, non-person.
I just, I just sent a letter beginning of the winter to the, the person who's been plowing me for, for 40 years, 35 years, to tell them that I can no longer use their services because they won't, they won't shovel to me, and I, and I need somebody to shovel, because I can't anymore. So I had to find somebody else. So that, you have to make sure that they understand it has to be plowing and shoveling.
So I think if we're doing the call to just make this available to local businesses, putting that out there, too, that that's.
Well, that's what I, I put, both shoveling and plowing would be required.
Right.
I think what you're gonna run into is not so much the length of the driveway is how much actual plowable snow there is. So I think the rate is really being looked at by how many inches of snow, and it would increase from there. From what I'm reading online, that's just the gist that I'm getting. So maybe we could even focus on it a little bit. To get a foot of snow versus three inches of snow, that's a big difference when plowing.
Well, usually they plow a couple of times, if it's gonna be that much snow, which would then be two separate plowing events.
Okay, okay.
Right? Does, does that make sense? Kathy? Also, I, I'm just thinking that, I mean, I know in our house, we, we have to shovel to the gas, or to the oil tank, and there's back decks, which don't really matter, but I think we should just say just to the door. I don't think, you know, where does shoveling end if people think that they're going to have everything shoveled around their house?
Side, sidewalks and in front of doors.
Yeah. So Katie, that would be, you know, if you hired somebody to let them know what the actual shoveling would involve?
Okay.
So it's to the, the sidewalk and the door, or doors.
Front of the garage doors, yeah.
Yeah.
And then if we have, like, you know, a handful of companies that wanna participate, then it's how do we decide which company is going out for which?
I would, I would say the best price at that point.
Like, so at this point of the pilot program, it'd be picking one company?
Yeah, because we're not gonna have that many clients. You're talking four, four or five people at the most?
At this point, I would think so. I don't think there, I don't know, I don't know what the needs are. That's, that's the problem. We don't really know. And that was kind of when Margie and I went to the Lions Club. You know, they asked that, how many people, and I said, "Because it's a pilot, we don't really know." You know, we're doing guestimate at this point.
Well, Bernadette said that there were 12 people on Meals on Wheels. Are those all people, since they're homebound? Are those all people that might take advantage of this?
Well, I'm thinking that they would want to take advantage of it if they don't already have something in place. So I also would be weary of how we would approach it, in the sense that I don't want them to cancel what they already have to put this in place. So, um, but however, if their driveway is not plowed and their walkways are not shoveled, they will not be able to receive their meal on wheels.
Correct.
So.
Do we have, do you have anybody now who has been in that situation in prior years that haven't been able to get their meals on wheels because of no plowing or shoveling?
Yes, yes, and I, some of them, I have coordinated businesses like Fernando, and they've taken over from there. But I have a few people right now looking, with the storm approaching tomorrow, are panicking. Last week, they, they were already calling me, so I, I have a, a list together.
And how many people are on that at this point, Bernadette?
I have six on that list. That's not including my meal on wheels.
But people may not necessarily be financially strapped. They just might be, they haven't found a snowplower. Right?
Right. Or that, yes, or unwilling to pay the price of it.
Yeah, that's, is it they're unwilling or unable?
Well, some are very well, are able, are financially stable enough to do it, and some are not, so.
Can you, can you weed out the ones that are not able? Because that's who this is designed for.
I understand that. I think that, that something would need to be in place where we would have to screen them. And I think there you run into an issue of, does somebody really wanna be screened for snow plowing? I don't know what Katie thinks of this, but I think we run into this issue with other things.
Are they people that are eligible for fuel assistance?
I'm not sure. I don't have that list. I would have to compare the list with Katie. But, I mean, there's a way to go about it. I, Katie, have you done this in the past, something similar, where you would have to screen clients?
I'm thinking like, like, for instance, to get on a particular payment plan with EverSource. If you submit your SNAP proof, that's good enough. I mean, that happens to be a very low-income guideline, but I think if we can use a program that already exists to say, "If you already qualified for this," and we can show that proof, or we have that proof, whether it's fuel assistance, the homeowner's tax assistance program, then that's, you don't have to do additional paperwork, but just showing that proof, or we can verify it, could make the most sense. And then also just as our own outreach to people, to let them know that you can access this program if your income is under X amount, to encourage people who maybe aren't reaching out, that they would qualify for something like this. Um, yeah, I think, I think having a guideline would be really useful for everybody.
Yeah.
Which one are you gonna use?
Katie, you mentioned the tax break. That's what goes through the assessor's office, right? And people apply.
I mean, those.
Yep, every year. I mean, that's, that has definitive guidelines as far as income and things like that are concerned.
That is obscenely low, though. I mean, the amount of income is obscenely low. I think that that could be one qualifier, but I think that there are people that fall that make just a little bit more than that, and they aren't qualified for that. You know, I, I don't know how someone lives on, on $25,000 or $28,000 a year, and then has money for a snowplowing.
Especially when you just get the electric bill that is three times what it usually.
Yeah, so I think, I think there has to, correct. I think there has to be, that circuit breaker thing is, is so inadequate, as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm. Um, I mean, other, like, it's energy assistance, I think, is slightly higher. You know, neither of these programs are really looking at someone's assets, it's just income. But yeah, I think, you know, you're targeting a certain population, and set kind of the guidelines around that, and then whatever that is, we can inform, you know, the people we're working with, or just a kind of a call to the public about if this would fit for them right now.
And Bernadette, I think it was you who mentioned Hebron has a fund for people who may need help with car repairs, which I thought was an excellent idea. But I wonder how they make their decisions, whether that might be a way to check how they come up with the guidelines for that.
And that fund you're talking about, Maggie, is the Hunger Action Team. They had a, a donation that funded a car repair for, it's really designed for people who they can't afford to get their car fixed, but they only have one car, and they need that to get to work.
Right.
Stuff like that.
Oh, I see, to get to work. Okay. So my thought off the top of my head is, Bernadette, I think you have a, a handle on who really needs the help between you and, between you and Katie. I think that you could come up with a viable list and come up with what you think are fair guidelines, because you're the ones with all the information. And I think that, you know, this, again, not to put more on you, but you're the one with the, the knowledge of which direction this should go, as far as dollar amounts. And I'm concerned about the immediacy of the storm coming tomorrow. So I would really love to have something in place so we could help whoever we have some money for at this point.
Does anyone, can anyone supply us with a list of who does sidewalks and plowing that is a viable?
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what Bernadette said that she did have.
Yes, right now I have four people on a list.
Who's on you?
Peter Marqu, he's fully insured, Joshua Stomberg, Fernando Garcia, and Tim Sanderson.
And they're all Columbia residents.
They're all very local.
Not, not local, Columbia resident.
Columbia residents? I would have to look into that specifically, but Fernando is.
Fernando is, yeah.
I, I'll have to look into it to see if they're actually, if their business is located here. Most of them are out of their home, but could be separate, could be out of a different town. Does it matter whether they live here, or their business is out of town?
I think live, live here. I don't know, what do you think? Because that's, that's what we said to the Lions, that we would look for people that were resident businesses.
How about it, first priority is to people who live in town?
I think Chris Griffin has landscaping. I don't know if he does shoveling or plowing. I would think, my.
Maggie, he does, he does mine.
But he's got a, a requirement that it's gotta be over three inches. Okay. Which Fernando does not. I don't know what the other one, I mean, that's another question. If you get a contractor, ask them what their requirements are. Yeah. So. But I think your idea, Kathy, that the fact is that this, in some ways, this is almost an added option for someone that does that kind of work, because if it's not an immediate need, and they can take care of their other clients, that's almost like a bonus, since they already have the equipment and everything's ready to go, I would think. Bernadette?
Yes.
What would you do if this, this program wasn't being talked about? What would you do about the storm tomorrow? Would there be, would there be some kind of, I mean, what would you do? Let's, I'm afraid, once we start, if we don't have all this nailed down, you're gonna have repercussions from people to say, "What do you mean the town came out and plowed your driveway?" I just, I think we really need this program within parameters.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have to be really careful about not saying that the town came out and plowed your driveway.
Right.
It, it has to, it has to be something else, because it's not really,
The town.
Town. People think it's, you know, the town crew is coming over and
Right.
helping us. So I think we have to be really careful about that.
Right.
It's a fund, it's a.
A charity fund. A charity fund.
Thank you.
I think people are gonna see this contractor that, you know, they would see the name of the company on the trucks that are there. So they're not going to put two and two together, I don't think, unless the person actually says, we could specifically write on their application form, something they need to fill out in order for it to happen, or however we work this, that they know this is not a town-sponsored program, this is, or this is not a town-specific program. It is through this program, this other program.
A charitable.
Charitable. Yep. Just noting it that way, I think, would be pretty good.
I also think, you know, we are, we're calling this a pilot for the very reason that we don't have the numbers yet, and, and for our Commission on Aging, that's the number one out of all the mission statements, is first to do the research, and that's what we're doing right now. Statements is first to do the research and that's what we're doing right now. So I I think. There's a chance we might have to make adjustments as we go along, but. Um, we're just trying to get a handle on what the statistics are.
Especially with the storm tomorrow.
I know.
Is this a case where Katie and Bernadette can identify who might need help tomorrow?
Okay.
Is that a start, Bernadette Katie?
Sure.
And then call, call a vendor you think might be a fit and see if you could. Set something up for the few that you've identified for tomorrow.
Mm hmm.
A good idea.
I could. I I I definitely could do that. Katie and I can work on that.
Mm hmm.
Great.
Um, I'm unfortunately, I'm up against uh. Some time constraints for myself. I have to take a test tomorrow for the kitchen certification. And um, my class is finishing today. So it looks like majority of my day will be spent online finishing up my class so I could take my test tomorrow.
Okay.
So I'm very tied up and I can't even fast forward. It won't allow you to. So um, I will, if I have to stay over or whatever the case may be, I will do that in order for Katie and I to. Get some type of list together. I do have people that I call anyway to check on them during storms, so um. We will check on them and during that conversation, I can ask them, um. Are you getting plowed out? Do you need to? Who who helps you? Do you like them? You know, I can have a little conversation and get some information out of everybody.
That would be great. And Katie, would you meanwhile uh see if you can nail down at at least one contractor? For tomorrow?
Um, yeah, I can check in with the places that Bernadette has and just.
Make sure they're residents and then go from there.
Yeah, and I I understand, I I think. The like dual purpose of supporting local businesses or Columbia residences, Columbia residents um. Businesses. I am curious though, Mark, like the contractor that. The town uses, like what what would that look like if, you know? Would that be significantly cheaper if we did? Kind of pin on.
The town doesn't have a contractor, Katie. We we use our employees to do all plowing.
Okay.
So I know the school subcontracts to Rana. Uh, but I don't believe Rana does. I I know they do not do sidewalks with the schools.
Okay. That's the gentleman that that I had for years that I just had to to let go because he doesn't shovel.
Yeah, so the one contractor I'm aware of doesn't do sidewalks.
Mm hmm.
The custodians at the school do sidewalks and we have our Dan Johnson, our facilities employee do sidewalks.
Well, I can call Chris uh Griffin too. He does, he's doing mine now. And if you want, I can call him and ask him if he wants to get, you know, uh, to contact Katie or or Bernadette whoever. Cause he lives in town.
That'll give us another option.
All right, I'll call him when we get off the phone.
And Margie, you have Katie's phone number?
Uh, yeah, it's the one zero zero eight number, right?
Yep.
Yes, great.
In the meantime, I do have a volun- I I have two volunteers that I can count on that in a pinch that they're able to go and. Um, clear out some space for someone to either get oil or for a delivery or some something like that, so I can um. Reach out to them if anyone needs assistance tomorrow.
Oh, that's great. It's good.
Good, good.
Uh, also, um, my husband was wondering, he, well, unless it gets canceled, but right now the Lions Club is supposed to meet. This evening. Um, and he just assumed he would get the check for the um. For the fund from the treasurer, but. He was asking me if if we'd like him to go to the treasurer's house today. In case the meetings um cancels or rescheduled. Um, just to get it and and who does he bring it to to?
Town hall.
Town.
To my office, Margie.
Okay. Yeah, that I think that would be great. Then we know the money's there. Right, all right. Thank you and thank him, please. Yeah. So I'm just gonna do, was there any other discussions? I want us to do a recap as I understand it. Go ahead, Mel.
Okay, I just wanted to say the Lions Club. I wonder if shoveling might be something that Jim Blair's um. Lions, junior Lions.
No.
It didn't participate in.
He 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 specifically, um, where was it? Oh, they were collecting money. For fuel assistance, I believe, at the monthly church breakfast.
Yeah.
And I happened to be talking to them. I said, oh, by the way, I wonder if you guys would be willing to help us with fundraising for. This fund that we're setting up and they were kind of saying yes, and then Jim immediately when he heard. That I had mentioned something to him, he said, but they can't be, I think it's more of an insurance concern. I don't know. For the Leos to do it. So he he said they can't be doing the shoveling, so.
Yeah, A H M, their program won't do it either. They won't have their.
Oh, and they have that task program, yeah.
Yeah, they won't do shoveling, they don't do any like powered removal of snow.
Right.
They're not powered. That's okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I understand that we are leaving it as this, as as much as I can backpack back backtrack. Um, Katie, you're gonna be contacting um whomever for tomorrow. Whatever contractor and you're gonna, you're gonna set up an amount and are we all in agreement? And I'm not sure if we have to vote on this as an action item. Mark, is it's regarding money? Should we set a specified amount of money per plowing?
I wouldn't do that because these might have to be negotiated.
Yeah, okay.
If you if you pigeonhole us and let's say he comes back and says, no, I I won't do anything under seventy-five dollars, then you're kind of stuck.
So but can you can you give him or them uh uh an amount? You know, when I I I can say when I said to Fernando, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but I'm guessing. That it's probably gonna be between forty and fifty dollars. I said, but I'm not sure how that's all gonna go. He didn't flinch at that.
Okay.
And I said, I don't know if you're interested or not, and he said, I'm very interested, so.
Right.
Uh, just just for Katie's information, if you put that amount out and see if that's viable, Katie?
Okay, yeah, and I, you know, just. I'm not sure how. Likely it is I'm gonna get a whole full response from people the day before.
Well, I think even if you get one or or two for tomorrow, just to at least get started, just to have something in place, even if it's one person, you know, whatever. Whatever can be done is gonna be appreciated by whomever it is and whenever they get it done, I don't think they're gonna care that it's the end of the the storm.
Mm hmm.
Right.
So if so, okay, so um here we go again. So Katie's gonna contract contractors. And see who is available, who's be willing to do it, and then she and Bernadette are gonna come up with a possible list for tomorrow's storm. And then work on using guidelines that they think are appropriate. For who gets the benefit of this pilot program. Is that correct?
Sounds doable.
Everybody, are we all on the same page?
Yeah, I'd add like input of of what you want the income limit to be because. You know, I'm usually working within like fuel assistance or like the homeowner's tax program. So most of the programs I'm working with have. Very tight guidelines, so if you wanna go above something.
I I got, yeah, I think Kathy had mentioned before and I kind of agree. Some of those. Baselines are very, very low and with inflation and I just heard on the news. They had to freeze the fuel assistance program catch up. And even when they think they're gonna be starting again, it's gonna be half of what they've been giving to people, so. To me, it just shows how important something like this is gonna be, so. If it is a little bit more, I think we'd leave that to your judgment, Katie. I think again, and I'm I'm gonna throw Bernadette in there too, because I think she has a real sense of who actually. Needs and I'm not sure what the guideline is and I I'm gonna suggest that Bernadette and Katie come up with something that they feel is. A fair amount.
Right.
Katie and Bernadette, what do you think about that?
I think it's hard when there's a fund that is not, it's not an unlimited fund.
Yeah.
Um. So that that is one of the harder pieces of it, I think. Um. You know, personally, I think if you're a senior and you happen to have. Assets, well, I understand you're gonna be living off those assets for. Part of your income for years to come, but you know, some people might look at it like, well. Should that be included or not? Um. You know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I also feel like if you offer it to one person at a certain income, you have to put it out there to the whole. Community.
Right.
Too, so.
Can I hop in and say something real quick? It's been kind of beaten at me just a little bit. Um, I feel like we're racing right now.
Me too.
And I think we really need to sit back because the storm is gonna come and it's gonna go and. There's no need to race in order to get a contractor ready for tomorrow, just in case and. You know, force some numbers out of us right now. I think that we just really need to slow down and um I think maybe. Uh, having the commission on aging go back and maybe. Kind of research more on some of the snow removal guys. And talk to them for us because that's a lot of work on our part. It's very time consuming to do. Um, but then Katie and I can work on the financial portion of it because we've worked in those programs before. Um, just wondering if we could split the responsibilities here instead of having us call the contractors and. And us come up with the the financial. Um. Levels on who qualifies and who doesn't. Uh, maybe if we take on that part and you guys can call some of the local contractors, make sure that they live in Columbia. That would be very helpful.
Well, yeah, I know that two of them, Fernando and um. Chris, uh, do live in Columbia. I don't know about the others. Yeah.
Let's just do this at a at a good pace that we're not racing.
And I mean, to go, I think that would be helpful because we are trying to establish this. As like a strong program going forward that we want to be successful and have support. I. I will say, you know, we as like a safety net to any kind of emergency happening in town. I mean, we have our. Kind of like fuel bank funds that we can sometimes use for other emergencies too, you know, where like we've used it for. Repairs on certain things. So I mean, if like. God forbid, you know, there was a situation where one person needed something plowed like. Even without this program being in place, we do have that little emergency fund, which yes, typically it's used for oil or utilities, but that. Is a little bit of a safety net.
Mm hmm.
In the meantime, um, that can be worked to be applied to like. You know, uh, basic need or emergency.
Well, to be clear, Katie, um, the Fuel Bank Oil and Propane Fund. We've also used for fixing a furnace, so it actually works. But we have a Fuel Bank Fund, a Food Bank Fund. And um now the Columbia Seniors Community Assistance and we have miscellaneous. That's where it's not defined.
Okay.
And there is sixteen hundred in miscellaneous that we could use.
Oh, okay.
Is that my? I'm wondering if that miscellaneous is um, I have that right here. Is a portion that I've used for our center um. That comes from any revenue that comes in from here from various events or trips.
That maybe that's where, because it's not defined, it just says miscellaneous.
Yeah. I generally use that for um situations here to bring people up and out. Um. Paying for um educational instructors, things like that.
Okay.
I would be certainly willing to call contractors today if Bernadette, if you can get me the names. Do you have a list that you could just shoot over to me or do you want to just give it to me now?
Sure, um, I what I think, do you have a cell phone?
Yeah.
Do you want me to text it to you or you want me to email it?
Email's easier for me.
Okay, I can do that.
So what you're suggesting then is that we know that there's a storm coming tomorrow. We know that we have money and we're choosing not to use it to help people tomorrow.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying that at all. Um. I'm saying we will be able to help anyone and if it comes down to it that we need to use that fund, we will. I'm just saying in order to get proper wording and everything around this. Um, and to make sure that everyone that we're using is from Columbia, it it's a lot of work to throw in there for. To for tomorrow's storm and we also have to take into consideration, like Katie said. Uh, these guys are out there preparing for the storm and I don't think they're really gonna wanna sit down and talk to us right now. I it's very last minute and very rushed.
It is very last minute, but we know that we have two contractors possibly. Chris is is certainly one. I can check out the others. That for tomorrow. That we can do it as a one time tomorrow and then see where it goes from there. It's a pilot program. We gotta start somewhere. And yes, we need parameters, but yeah, we really do have a storm coming tomorrow and we do have the money.
Yeah, I think it's like.
We're we're being put on to Katie and I right now and and it's very unfair to us when. I'm my day is jam packed. I also have a transportation program that needs to be called and organized for the storm. This is a lot to throw on the two of us right now uh for last minute. I get that there's money there and it can be spent, but. We could possibly have another storm next week, so we have some time. I and and nobody in this town is gonna go. Without, we have so many wonderful volunteers. I reach out to as many piece people as I possibly can during a storm. We are doing everything right. Um, I think that this using this program for tomorrow's storm. Is necessary if absolutely needed, but we shouldn't be racing around right now to call these contractors. Last minute. I just think it's it's very unfair.
Yeah, I I would say like we can trust two things right now. We can trust that Kona is there to support us with this money. If something arises where we do need that help, that you guys are gonna. Not pull back that money, even if it's something that's not perfect. And then also I trust. Just in my experience that Bernadette is gonna be looking out for everybody and people are gonna be reaching out to her if there's an issue. So I think. You know, we want to prevent things and have things organized as much as possible, but if in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, like. The situation is we need to handle it. I I would trust both those ends of it. Um, but yeah, we wanna try to get. As organized as possible to make this functioning if the expectation is. We're helping people who deserve it and need it. If the expectation is we wanna have the vendors be fitting. What we want, both that they're offering it to Columbia residents and that they're fitting what we need as far as. How much to plow and the sidewalks and the best price. So if we wanna kind of have those things set up. You know, people who need it the most and the best price for vendors and best vendors, then that will take a little bit longer. Um, but I think. You know, my belief is if we really. Um, but I think, you know, my belief is if we really needed Kona to help us with something. Tomorrow morning for somebody, that you guys would step up and, and, and do that. And that Bernadette is not gonna turn anyone away if they reach out to her. I, I don't know, I mean, it's not, so it's not perfect, but in this great zone, I, I don't know.
So, the way it is right now, no one actually knows about this fund until Kathy or whomever. Puts something on the Everything Columbia Facebook page, right? That's gonna be the only viable advertising that you have between today and tomorrow?
Correct.
So if you put it on today for tomorrow. It says on there, if you need assistance, contact Katie Wilt, right?
Correct.
Is that what it says?
Yes.
So is that a good way at this point to be able to get a baseline? Use, you, you put it out there, the storm is gonna be there tomorrow, it's in people's. Head that this fund is available and see what the response is for tomorrow? So then the only thing that you need to have for tomorrow is. Will one of those or both of those contractors commit to helping? If you hear out that those people really need help?
I think the other piece though is if you want to feel a certain. Comfort that this is going to people who need it. I mean, if somebody calls me and they self-identify as I need this help, and if that's good enough. For this group, then that's good enough for me. Um, if you want it to be a deeper dive of, well, you know, is it something? That they really need because they're saving their money, or you know, they're not gonna pay for it themselves, then. I, I guess I just would need to know that, that part. If I'm responsible, I wanna make sure I'm on the same page and doing what I need to do. And like I said, if it's as simple as if somebody self-identifies. And that's all we need, then great, I'm, more people we can help, the better, um, I'm fine with that, but. I just, if we put it out there and people call me, I just need to know how to inform them. It's like the same way, if somebody calls me and says, oh, my neighbor, I think would benefit from this program, how do they qualify? How would I inform them? Um, unless we do a messaging of, we're thinking about this program, reach out, let us know. Or more of a general soft kind of outreach.
Amy? Oh, did you wanna say something?
No. I think, I mean, it's always funny, like these things, that's like, we're helping people. And it is like, there are these like other challenges to like get it set up, you know, and I don't wanna make it. Of course, so, so strict, um, you know.
Well, Katie, for, just to get a start, Bernadette, can you just shoot the names that you're aware of that might need some help? And if Katie could call them and inquire if they have a game plan for tomorrow?
Yeah, that could be a good check-in, yeah.
And Marjorie, you're gonna send the one contractor to Katie?
I'm gonna, I'll call Chris Griffin when we get off the phone.
Okay.
I, one thing I wanted to add is I don't think it should be posted on Everything Columbia, until you have at least a couple of. Contractors that you know that they, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I will call them, then if they say no, then I'll call Katie and let her know.
Okay, so let's, let's identify the knowns that we have, people that we normally have to help. In this kind of situation, and then, um, get some contractors lined up. And Kathy, you're gonna send both myself and Bernadette and Katie the letters.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and.
And we'll see what kind of reaction we get.
Okay, so, um, again, just to be clear. So I know definitively Fernando's Columbia, I know he's interested, there's one. So that's, that's a definite, Katie.
Okay.
That's one.
Does Katie have Fernando's contact?
I can, his phone number is eight six oh two zero eight seven two four eight.
Yes, okay.
You know what, I could, I'll just make it later to go to hospice. And then if you, if you, um, send me the other contractors, Bernadette, I'll do that research today. And call them, and I'll just see who's eligible, cause you said you already have insurance information on them. And if Chris is one, he would have to then get the insurance information.
I don't actually have the insurance information, I just know that they're insured.
That's all that, yeah.
Oh, you just need verbally.
I, I have to go, I, I have some hospice patients I have to go visit, okay? Bye-bye.
Thank you, Lynn.
Bye, Lynn.
Bye, Lynn.
So, okay, who do they call, if Chris says, who, would Rachel call with the, with the number, Katie or Bernadette?
Katie.
Okay.
Cause she'd be the ones that would be contacting contractors. So Bernadette's gonna give me the list of contractors. I'll do my research, then I'll, I will send both to Katie and to Bernadette. Who are Columbia residents, so they both have that information. Okay? Okay.
That's it, good luck tomorrow.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. Um, before you do the motion, I know I spoke to you, Kathy, but for the next few months, I'm gonna be out of the country. So I may not be available to, for any of these meetings and to vote on anything, so. Thank you, and have fun. Thank you. Okay, motion, motion to adjourn?
At nine fifty-five.
Still moving. Marjorie, second?
I'll second.
Millie, all in favor? I, I, okay, without it. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Good luck with the storm. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.